I would like to call to order the April 19th, 2022 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome everyone. I trust everybody had a nice Easter holiday and as a result, we're meeting on Tuesday instead of our normal Monday. We have with us tonight Reverend Tony Hall from Conquerors Church for our invocation. Let me say we had planned to have Reverend Hall from Conquerors Church. The date change may have gotten him as well. So at this time, I'll ask everybody if you'll stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up is the approval or correction of the minutes and you all have copies of those before you. Do I hear a motion to amend or approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next is the approval of the agenda. You also have a copy of that in front of you, including the changes on page eight. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented, including the changes on page eight?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to recognitions and presentations and we're happy to have Myra Bumgarner with us tonight, who will read us the proclamation for Older Americans Month. Welcome.
Sort of a question of Older Americans Month. Older Americans Month, Age My Way 2022. Whereas Cabarrus County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans' need to thrive and live independently as long as possible. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsible to, are responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Older America's Month, Americans' Month. We urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their community. And as a personal invitation, I would like to throw it out there to all the older Cabarrus Countians and say, this is your opportunity to get out and have some fun. In the last two years, we haven't had very much of that. So there will be a ton of activities going on out of the senior center. You can, if you do Facebook, see it there, not run by the senior center and pick up a flyer. There will be things like scavenger hunts at Frankless, art days at the center, craft days, jumbo game days, there's even a karaoke. So if singing is your thing, you have your opportunity. So I encourage all the older Cabarrus County citizens to get out and play the month of May 2022.
Great.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt the Older Americans' Month proclamation?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think that a majority of us qualify in that category of older Americans, or I'll speak for myself, so looking forward to enjoying this month. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to informal public comments. I have three of the yellow cards that have been turned in. The first one is from Marvin Boss. If you would, approach the podium and speak into the microphone so our listening audience can hear as well.
Thank you Chairman, and all the board members. I come tonight to talk about a subject that is dear to my heart. I'm born and raised in Cabarrus County. For over 50 years, I took animals to the Cabarrus County Fair. About several years ago, I was asked by the person that's over the North Carolina Association of County Fairs, why I didn't take any animals to our own fair anymore. So we showed him why. I had an email in July of that year that said, the administration right now told me they didn't want or need me anymore. And you talking about just crushed. But I've seen this and seen this and down and down and down. When we moved to the new fairgrounds, we were so proud, so proud. And I said, if things is right, we should be between 400 and 500,000 people in the next 10 years. Well, I don't think it's near that. And I think there's some weakness there that needs to be corrected. There's a lot of people, not just myself, a lot of people, farmers, that just won't go anymore because they've been shut down and shut out. There's a lot of the churches and if the ones that are here can remember back at the old fairgrounds, there was a lot of people that had, you know, places to eat and everything. And it was a, it was a wonderful time. It was wonderful memories. And I hate to see that go away. I think it's time for we stand up and take the fair and go back to where it needs to be and hold fast to it. So anything that I can do to help, I'll be glad to because I just, I had the fair in my heart and it's been there forever and I just don't want to see it go away. As a former employee of this county was, he said, it's not nothing but a glorified carnival. And we don't want it to be that, ever. We want the people to enjoy agriculture and let these people know, especially the kids, where their milk comes from, their eggs, everything. And if we don't show them this, how will they ever know? They won't. They won't ever see it. So please, I'm begging, let's do something about this and make it strong again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerry Anderson.
Hello. This is my daughter, Jada Sue. This is who I'm fighting for. Evidently, somebody in here from Capitol Ministries thinks that I'm a, shouldn't be up here. That, I wish somebody would tell me how to fight for my child. Why he would go and talk and tell people I'm a bad person. And thanks to Cabarrus County, people probably think this soldier is a bad person. I know people in my neighborhood wonder where that child is and what happened to her and why she ain't at my house now. You know, I had seven years in the service, honorable, the highest that you could get out of the service, honorable discharge. They watched me seven years. 15 years at my house now, not even a parking ticket. You know, I should have some credibility as much as a police officer. And I saw what I saw that day when two vicious, evil DSS workers posing as DSS workers from your DSS came to my house and perpetrated one of the heinous crimes I've ever seen in my life. And now, I've cried and I've cried, it's been six years since my daughter's been gone. And I guess Dan Marshall don't realize, he probably don't have, I don't know what's wrong with him. Anyway, it's become Cabarrus scandal. Cabarrus scandal. This is a scandal. And only way you can take care of it is to address it, not by not talking, case sealed. You know, this is something that you ought to get involved and get done. We got enough smart people here in this county that can look and tell that this little girl should be mine, not the government's, mine. Now they beat my daughter up so bad, took the child from her, ditched her, she died. She needed that child to live. I had to bury my child and then lose another one. And they showed no, no respect to that child. They didn't care for her. They didn't care if she was tore away from my house and never seeing us again, never seeing us again, never know if we hate her or what the heck happened to her. And didn't offer to our family. And I'm just saying, a mentally challenged mother with a black child that was intentionally separated from her guardian, her families to take her child, what was it for? Mike Downs, what was it for? Money? Was it because she was black? I need to know the answer why she was taken from my house. This is a scandal until it's answered.
Okay, our next speaker is Jeter Anderson.
How y'all doing? Where's our county manager at? I only see a county budgeter. County manager wouldn't have this going on out here. County manager wouldn't lock his doors. Ah, he's pretty selfish. That's a pretty selfish guy right there, Mike Downs, is pretty selfish. Let me tell you about, he locked his doors, put this on the board, he put this on the Cabarrus people out here. Mike Downs, shame on you. You know who else you drug into it, sir? Y'all wouldn't believe it. He drug his wife in on it. Should I know who your wife is? You drug her in on it, sir. You're selfish.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that we terminate that public speaking for this gentleman right now and have the deputies escort him. This is a place of civility.
And you know what, sir? You shouldn't have your wife out there meeting me out there on the corner. It wasn't right. It wasn't appropriate. That's not what you're supposed to do. And shouting at us, that was wrong. You drug your wife into it and Mr. Schu is gonna be running for reelection? Why? To sit up here and block me some more? All you could do is find out the same thing I found out. You couldn't go around Mike Downs, could you? Couldn't go around him. Thank you so much for everything you've done, Schu. Why don't you just retire? You don't need to sit up here and be around your friends and family. How long you known these people? 40-plus years? Get somebody young up here, more bang for the buck that will go above and beyond. Mike Downs, shame on you dragging everybody into your scandal, into your scandal because you can't give us no answer. What did you take her for? Is she your slave? Is she your slave? I need an answer why my niece is missing, why my child is missing. She was my child. I, parent guardian of that child, dojo, dojo system, and I raised that little girl and she shouldn't be taken from my house. And you should give me an answer, not lock the doors. So you're not a county manager, you're a county budgeter, your court building looks great, your parking lot DSS looks terrible. And Schu, why don't you, I respect you for your service and everything, thank you very much, but please, please, we don't need you up here reelected again. If you, all you're gonna do is sit there and stand in my way. And Richard, are you okay, sir? You ain't blinked a time. Did you, are you okay? Yeah, I didn't know who Richard Cook was, but I knew he had a medical problem, I met his medical problem before I even met him. Y'all, we gotta do something. We gotta do something. You can't allow two unprofessional, untrained DSS workers to come in and take a beautiful little girl, right there, beautiful little girl. You can't allow that because they wanted her, Mike Downs. That was our child. That was my child. That was my sister's child. And you allowed them to take her away because they loved her. Wrong. Thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Power to the people.
Power to the people.
The government ain't gonna handle it.
Power to the people.
Handle the scandal.
Handle the scandal.
Okay, we move now, I think that's all of our public comment cards that were turned in, so we now move to our consent agenda, which consists of items that were discussed at our work session two weeks ago. So do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to new business. First up is private, public-private partnership for library and senior center resolution. And we're happy to have Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris for that presentation.
Good evening. So this item is pretty simple. It is looking for you to approve a resolution for entering into the lease related to the public-private partnership for the library and senior center in Afton Ridge. I could answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions, commissioners? I think this is an item we've already discussed several times. So if there are no other questions, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is memorandum of understanding with charter communications to support application for great grant, and we're happy to have Todd Shannely to talk about that item.
Good evening. So at the work session two weeks ago, we talked a little bit about broadband initiatives here in Cabarrus County. And what I've pulled up here on the screen is a little bit of those maps that we discussed at the last meeting, where it shows the eligible, eligible areas for broadband access through the great grant program that the state of North Carolina is, is currently administering. That is the growing rural economics with, with access to technology grant. So as you see up in the upper right, it's a little faded on here, it's a little pinker on my screen, but this upper corner here and then this area south of Mount Pleasant is the, are the current areas. And then there's a couple outlying dots of space throughout the county that have less than 25 megs download and three megs of upload speeds. So that is what they consider to be access to broadband services here in North Carolina. So we were approached by Spectrum, which is also Charter Communications, to participate in their application for their grant to the state of North Carolina. What they have asked us to do is to participate to, as a county partnership, to increase their points on their grant process. And through that, they would, they would request our, our participation to be $50,000 on a, on a, on a project that would be more than a million dollars worth of grants or projects for this expansion. And I guess what I'm looking for you, for you tonight is a motion to approve this memorandum with the, for the county manager to sign and with the review of the county attorney. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can on the, on the great grant or broadband access.
So questions for Todd? The, the county's participation, would that be part of the American Rescue Plan funds or?
That is what we, that's what we were discussing, is that that would be the intention, would be used, those, those funds that you approved just a moment ago in the consent agenda.
Gotcha. Okay, any other, yes, go right ahead.
Just for clarification, now that I can see the map a little bit better, it is all the, the pink areas that it covers?
Yes, it's the pink areas that are eligible. So it's not that they're specifically going to access all of these areas, it's, they have a specific area that they're targeting. It's 250 homes that they would be accessing. This is, this obviously doesn't cover, that 50,000 participation doesn't cover all of these homes, but these are the eligible spaces. Because it is a competitive grant process, we don't have access to be able to provide you the, the, the actual homes or what have you that they plan to, to give, but it is, it is 250 residents in Cabarrus County.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize the county manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with charter communications, subject to review and approval by the county attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, we move now to reports. First up is from the Board of Commissioners, updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. And I see you have keyed up Commissioner Honeycutt.
Yes, I have a message from the senior advisory board that the senior game follies are going to be April 26th at 6:00 PM at the Laureate Center in Kannapolis, and tickets are $5. It's always a fun night, and they invite you to come out and be a part of that.
Excellent, thank you. Any other reports?
Just a quick update from the town of Midland. They have solidified their ribbon cutting for the Veterans Memorial. That will take place the 30th of May at 10:00 AM, and all are invited to attend.
Great, thank you.
And from Active Living in Parks, the Roly-Poly Fest is May 28th from 10:00 to 2:00 at Rob Wallace Park. The 40th anniversary of Frankless Park. The Junebug 5K is June the 4th at 9:00 AM. Paddle boats and mini golf at Frankless Park are now open on weekends at 11 o'clock. And Discovery Day Camp, all-day summer camp begins June the 20th for nine weeks. And from the town of Harrisburg, let me get my, oop, didn't recognize one. The Run the Burg 5K, sponsored by the YMCA, is Saturday, April the 30th. Registration is open. The July 4th parade applications are now open. And that is it from the town of Harrisburg. So thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we will have general comments by board members.
I would, I'll make a comment that I think we, I'm uncomfortable when we cross, when public comments cross the line, so I'm not sure what or if, anything we've done about it. Personal attacks, if somebody wants to talk about policy or something they think we've done in error, I'll listen to that all day long. That's, that's part of the process. The personal attacks on our county manager and county attorney of the last two times, prior to that, I don't really remember, but the last two meetings, in my opinion, crossed the line, and I'm not sure what to do about that. So I'm not offering a solution, I'm just pointing out the obvious, I think.
I, I appreciate those, those comments and echo them as well. I think that it's quite a different situation. We certainly want to have the public forum open for anyone who chooses to come and address an issue, but the type of behavior that we've witnessed tonight and previously, I think is inappropriate. I think especially in, and hopefully I won't cross the line in the comments, but the issues that are being discussed are issues that have been sealed by the courts, that we are not privy to all the information and will not be unless we find some way to, to violate the law. And so I think for, for the constant pounding of those issues without responding to the public so that they understand that these are serious legal matters that have been sealed by the court is very, very awkward for us. Typically, I would turn to our county attorney and ask for, for his advice in this regard, since he has been a direct subject of those verbal attacks. I'm somewhat reluctant to do so, but I would certainly be open to hear from you, Mr. Cook, what remedies might be available to us and how we might control these inappropriate outbursts without depriving anyone of their rights and privileges.
Well, I think that the way we've always handled it is to just let people say what they want, and most of the time, it's not been a problem. Here lately, it has been more of a problem where there've been personal attacks. And, you know, typically, you can, you could tell people at the very beginning of public comment that they can't make personal attacks, that we're not gonna listen to them. But most, I say, in the past, here at the county commission, we've never said anything about it, just let people say what they wanted and, and just dealt with it. When I say most of the time, it does never get to that point. It's usually about policy or about something someone's unhappy about that, that relates to, you know, some procedure. But, you know, unless, I think if you say something in advance that you're not gonna tolerate, that, then you can cut them off. But I think if we don't say anything in advance, we pretty much have to just take what, what we get. And since they're limited to three minutes, you know, that kind of puts a, a limit on it in such a way that they just can't go on and on. So it's, it's just been something we've just kind of avoided, you know, trying to, to put any sort of a limit on what somebody says and just let them say what they want. So, you know, but your comment about this particular matter is right on, since that was a juvenile matter that was handled in juvenile court and those records are sealed, we can't talk about it. So otherwise, you know, you could respond in some way to, to deal with some of the things that are said, but we, we can't. And, you know, can't even comment on whether what they're saying is true or not. So we just kind of have to just take what they say and just, you know, accept it until they're, they're finished. But it is something that we can't comment on. I think I can say that the county did an investigation separately, I can say that, and looked into it when they first brought this up, because this is a matter that's, that's seven, six years old. It wasn't brought up here until in the last six months. So, and, and because it was raised, there was an investigation done internally through DSS and conducted actually by David and myself. And that's why, you know, we keep getting called out on it, it's because of that. And, and, you know, that's all I can say is that we did, we did look into it. It's not like the county didn't do anything, but it is a matter, juvenile matters are handled in the courts. Those matters are decided by the judge, not by the county. So I think that's really about as much as I can say about their matter.
It's just that, it wasn't just a local review, it was a review on the state level as well.
That's true, yes.
One concern I wanted to address on that is, they kind of bled over into our general, you know, our, our public comments, not before the meeting, they were out talking to, demanding addresses from some of the folks that were in our audience. And I think we need to put a, you know, we needed to handle something like that. It's not fair for somebody to come to a meeting and then demand their address. I can tell you who it was after that they were asking their address, but they cornered me and then, and asked for this gentleman's personal address.
Well, I would say that no one from the county should give any addresses out on anybody.
Right, and it wasn't a county employee, it was just someone in the, in the audience.
Anybody, you know, whether it be a county employer or not, I'd say no one, no one gives out any addresses. If they want to get an address, they can, if it's available, they can go find it on their own.
I wanted to make a comment too, since I got threw under the bus as well, you know. And basically, the way that happened was, I tried to help those people. They called me on the telephone, and I took a half hour or more of my time listening to what we heard tonight in a different way, over the telephone instead of in person. And the way that I left it with them was, well, let me just see if I can look into it and find out if there's anything more that, that I can tell you. And then, if you remember, Chairman, I talked with you about it, and you told me that it was a closed case, nothing can be said about nothing, documents can't be discussed, released, or anything because it was court ordered. And I conveyed that to them, and they called me back again, and I listened to the same thing over and over again. So, that's how I got brought into this conversation tonight, was because I talked to them, but I couldn't give them any information, because just like Rich said, I don't have any information to give them, you know. But, set that part aside. We cannot tolerate that. We cannot tolerate that kind of behavior. This is a place of civility. This is a place of reverence. Our responsibility is to listen and to hear everybody that wants to speak, but it needs to be in a civil manner. They need to address the board. We're elected by the people of Cabarrus County. They put us in high esteem, and I value what the people of Cabarrus County has done when they put me in office. I value that very highly. I don't take it lightly. And we're not to be disrespected. And for the county manager to get thrown under the bus like that, and rich, yeah, that's, that's terrible. We shouldn't, we should not allow that. And that's why I had suggested we cease it and have them removed from this place, and forbid them to ever come back again, as far as I'm concerned, unless they can act in a civil manner and address this board with the respect that it's due, because we represent the citizens of Cabarrus County. We're not just some Johnny-come-lately. We're held in high esteem, and we need to maintain that. So, anyway, that's my two cents, and, anyway, you know, it's, it's very embarrassing to me, and it hurt me, because I know that we have the final say-so on what goes on in here. That don't happen. That should not happen.
Thank you for those comments. I think that we have been extremely tolerant over an extended period of time, perhaps too much so. And as is true with, with any, anything, any information that I might share with these speakers, I, everything I do is at the request of the board. I am chairman because you elected me to be so. And so, if you direct me, or if you have no objections, however you choose to, to handle it, and, and we can discuss it now, you can give it some thought and give me direction later, but I think it would probably, with the approval of the board, I think we could probably compose a statement to be read at the beginning of our public comment session, indicating the behaviors that will be acceptable in front of this, this board at this public meeting. And this is not a platform for a performance on television. And if you behave in that, that fashion, you will be asked to leave at whatever point is deemed appropriate. So, I am seeing positive head nods, so we will go ahead and, and with the assistance of staff, we'll put together a, a formal statement of behaviors that will be allowed. And if, if those rules are broken, then, then we will, we'll ask them to leave premises. If every, if anybody has any objections to that, okay, very good. Any other general comments that anyone would like to make? Hearing none, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and acquisition of real property. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we are now in closed session. And thank you to all that have joined us on television and online tonight.